People we want to introduce before we start. This is Dr. Stropko, she's our assistant superintendent. We're grateful that she is here tonight. Mr. Vaughn is our board president. He is also gracious with his time, so thank you, Steve. And our mayor, he's joined us as well. So, thank you, Mayor, very much for joining us. So, we have, the way we do town halls, and we've been doing town halls since we started, since I started, in the summer of 2018. So, we're actually going on five years. And I'll be honest about town halls. When they started, we, you know, meet the new guy, right? You had sixty, seventy, eighty people showing up at these things. And we committed to doing them at least once a quarter throughout the duration of how long I get lucky enough to be here. So, at times, there's been one or two people in the audience, honestly. Then we moved them to Facebook, and that actually helped quite a bit because people were able to stay at home and ask questions and see what we're doing. So, we're still on Facebook, which is great. But we knew that, you know, some folks might not want to be on Facebook. And COVID's kind of faded away from us at this point, so people are more likely to come out again. So, we thought we'd give this a shot because we certainly have a pretty important issue on the ballot in May. And so, we're going to talk briefly about that. That's typically what we do at town halls. Then we also turn it over to you. And you are able to ask anything about the schools that you want to. It's relatively informal. We'll probably go back and forth between the folks that are here and then the Facebook folks so that we can kind of be amicable to everyone that's here. So, we'll start with a couple slides that hopefully will give you a flavor of what we're really trying to accomplish with this bond issue that's ahead of us on the May ballot. Certainly here, you see the overhead plan. This is on the site of Parma Senior High. A couple features we like to point out when we talk about the plan. First, we have the red brick. We are trying to emulate some of the more popular features of Parma Senior High. So, the red brick is certainly sort of a distinctive feature of Parma Senior High. We would recreate that. The clock tower is also sort of a distinctive feature of Parma Senior High. We've listened to our alumni. In fact, we had a listening session last summer. We asked people, you know, what's important to keep. Clock tower always comes out, really is something that's sort of a jewel in the center of the city. And so, we want to make sure that we can do that again. That is a rendering, right? So, it's not the actual clock tower. We are, it's not in the same place. The clock tower that we currently have, we will take down this summer and try to preserve as much as we can. We're working with the architect to do that. We don't want to just shelve the whole thing. We'd like to keep some piece of it. But that would be a new clock tower on the new campus. A few of our challenges. So, when we talk about, you know, why do we want this? Why do we want to build a new facility? Our classroom spaces are not indicative of what students will move into when they go to college, when they go to a trade school, when they go to potentially even into a starting job, a starting place in the workplace. And so, as we look at our facility and know that, you know, all of our facilities are really dated at this point. The youngest facility was built in 1968, opened in 1968. So, if you think about from the time Lyndon Johnson was president, think about all of the changes that have occurred in technology, in security, in HVAC, in how we approach work, and how we approach collaboration, and so much has changed. And yet, there is our facilities, all 1968 or before. So, we want to make sure that our classroom spaces reflect what our students will continue to see. The other piece is that we feel that our students deserve the same opportunities, the same facilities, the same advantages of what they would find throughout North East Ohio. We want Parma to be the same opportunity in terms of a school district, in terms of a place to learn, a place to grow your family as all of the school districts around us that have invested. And when you think about the school districts who invested, other than Cuyahoga Heights, you could walk to any border right now of Parma, throw a pebble across the border, and you're going to hit a school district who has built new. Parma has not. We have the oldest facilities by far of our region. The other piece that we're trying to stress, and we haven't always done a great job of... We did a pretty good job of showing people this. I mean, honestly, this had, Gary, do you remember, seventy-five thousand hits right out of the gate? I mean, this was very popular last fall when we showed people what this would look like. So, we've done a pretty good job of showing folks what the exterior will look like. We haven't always done a great job of talking about, so what happens inside? How is, how is a new school advantageous? How is it any different from what you already have? Or why can't you just, you know, paint Valley Forge, paint Normandy, paint Parma Senior High? So, all of these different features, and I'm going to show you some different pictures that kind of compare a new to an older campus. Safety is first, obviously. Clearly, we had another school shooting yesterday. It's something that is an unfortunate and really horrific part of our society. We have to try to make sure that we're as safe as possible. We certainly do in our campuses now. We've spent money to try to be as safe as possible. But the reality is, if you go to Parma Senior High, you're going to come on over a hundred and twenty-five doors on the first floor. Literally a hundred and twenty-five doors open out to the outside in the subway. So, one way, and this is a simplistic way, but it's an important way, is that you cut down on the access points from the outside. And you have very clear entrances that are marked and really staffed in a way that keeps students more safe than a hundred and twenty-five doors that open to the outside. Just one example, physically comfortable. Now, I understand sometimes that's not popular. Sometimes people say, ah, I went to school and it was a hundred and two degrees and there were no heat days. And we get that. But at the same time, again, if you look at surrounding communities and you look at the environments they've created, we want to be competitive there. And part of that is new HVAC systems. And it's not always about heat. Sometimes it's about how cold a room is and how you can regulate that temperature or not based on old boiler systems that sort of have peaked really a generation ago. Future career writing, we talked a little bit about that, but we want state-of-the-art labs. We have seventeen different career tech pads, seventeen. No one else does that within their own school district on the same campus like we want to. We will have seventeen career tech pads. And career tech pads all come out with industrial certifications. They all come out with college credit hours. We want to make sure that those labs are as future writing, are as workforce-like as we possibly can make them. Certainly, we've done some of that, but a new facility allows us to improve. Collaborative areas, certainly collaboration is an important part of learning, one that was never apart, really, probably until the nineties. But collaboration and students working together is a 21st century skill. It's something that we build into our playbook. We talk about read, write, discuss. The discussion piece being probably the most important part of that learning process, although writing is very close to. So, collaborative areas are important. New technology. If you go to Parma Senior High right now, you're going to see places where we had to... You can't even put a gate down, which couldn't actually make it safer because it barricaded a hallway, because we had to run the Wi-Fi, the wire underneath it. I mean, it's just example after example after example. We walk through our schools, and you're welcome to walk through our schools at any point. Let me know and we'll set something up for you. But technology is definitely something that we've tried to keep up with, but there's certain limitations. Student engagement and community engagement are both really important, especially in that community engagement piece. We have tried to put our actions behind where our words are. So, when we say that our schools are community assets, we've opened our pools on weekends. We've opened our hallways on weeknights. We opened Byers Field on Saturday for an egg hunt. We'll open Byers Field this summer for movie nights. So, we've always tried to say that we recognize you pay these taxes to have these facilities. We should make them as accessible and valuable to you, whether you have kids in a school or not. We want you to have some type of tie and some type of function. And so, that's also an aim of a new campus. Talked about safety before. Again, modern high schools are going to have secure vestibules that check right into the main office. And that's, that's a real advantage in that, you know, you know exactly from a main office perspective, who's coming in, when they're coming in, why they're coming in. What we've done is try to put vestibules. Now, we haven't done it at Parma Senior High. We've started to get grant money to be able to do this in other schools so that there's sort of a two-check way to get in. We don't want people coming in for the first time, right? And showing their license. They should be able to really prove that they're there for some type of school purpose. Then they get in, and then they go through a more strenuous process. That is, again, something we're building, but it's something that's really automatic in new campuses. So, that's just one example of how we can make these schools new, more safe. One way too, and we didn't mention this and we didn't have a picture, but you can lock down entire wings in new schools. You could never do that with the technology and the infrastructure that we have in our high schools right now, or any of our schools right now. So, if there's, gosh forbid, a lockdown for some purpose in the ninth grade wing right here, we're able to actually lock access to that. And so, these other wings, you know, that's when we can start to actually evacuate those areas. And the ninth grade is where we're going to focus our attention. Physically comfortable, as we talked about. Again, you see, you know, what a new facility looks like. This is really kind of a typical of what a media center looks like now compared to what that's actually Parma Senior High's media center, just in terms of the bright air and the, you know, room, spacious room, spacious setup there. Future career writing, as we talked about, we've held up okay. I mean, I'm very proud of our career tech programs, but I know we can do better. I know we can do better with new construction, and I know we can do better with really new technology that would come with these schools to make sure that we are providing the best possible opportunities and preparation for our students. Collaborative areas, see open spaces from classrooms. And so, let me come behind the table here. This is one potential setup. We would work with our teachers to really make sure that we are crafting setups that give them the flexibility to teach the way they teach now. We don't want to create something that is going to be obsolete and they're going to hate, why would we ever use that? But at the same time, evolve. Evolve into a more collaborative approach. Evolve into something where when we talk about read, write, discuss, that the discussion can be more natural. So, what they have here are, here's your classroom, then off of it, you have these community areas. And the community areas, we can open this classroom up, have a little bit more of a broad place to have that discussion, have that collaborative piece. And that's just one example of how to use that. Clearly, our current high schools don't have that. Technology, again, we've talked about just making sure that we can have the best. We don't have that right now. We've kind of patchworked. And that's okay. That's what, you know, we've been forced to do. But we also have a seventy-one point nine million dollar investment that the state wants to give us now. So, we're hopeful that we can take advantage of that so that the state's actually, and that's money that you all have put in, putting back an investment into Parma, into making sure that we have the best technology. Student engagement, we talked about just sort of the, what classroom areas can look like in new high schools versus our high schools, obviously much more traditional. Community engagement, again, trying to make sure that we have our assets, our facilities are your assets. That's really an important part. And so, we would actually have, we've shown this before, but this would be the navatorium here. That's the pool area in the new high school. We certainly didn't want to build a new school that had less assets than Normandy, Valley Forge, and Parma Senior High. So, that's where you see the navatorium there. So, all of these things are assets, and we just wanted to show them so that folks have an understanding of, here's some of the before and aftershocks. Here's some of what we're trying to create. Now, again, from an outside perspective, we'll turn it over to questions in a couple minutes because you are more important than me. But one of the pieces that we've tried to prepare for is, this would be approximately three thousand students. And one of the questions is, oh my gosh, won't the kids be overwhelmed? You know, I don't want my freshmen to walk into fourth period lunch and they're at a three thousand kid, you know, lunch, or a one thousand kid lunch. You know, you divide three thousand by three lunch periods, it's a thousand kids. So, these community learning spaces would actually have their own cafeterias, their own unit offices where you have a counselor, you have a home liaison potentially. That's sort of an emotional support for students. You have a principal, a grade level principal right there. So, that's really the goal of, you know, a tenth grade community is, tenth graders should be able to, for the most part, have all their classes here. So, it's not, we understand it's going to be a sprawling campus. A three thousand student campus is very significant. Seventeen career tech programs on the same campus is very significant. But we're trying to break that down, trying to make that more palatable so that it really is for grades and you're not traveling all over. Eleventh and twelfth grade plus STEM. STEM is an important part of what we do. We've been very proud of our STEM programs. We've expanded those since we started in 2018. We want to continue to have the best STEM labs. Tri-C has actually said that they will collaborate with us to build a STEM lab so that it is, you know, again, cutting edge and the same thing students are going to walk into at a collegiate level. And we would also open that STEM lab on weekends so that families can use that potentially for some type of scouting activity or some type of different, you know, whatever group might want to. We would have that STEM activity available to them. Again, here's your career tech. Navatorium, which is a pool. Performing arts center, which is a little bit more of an intimate than just kind of a large auditorium. It's got enhanced sound features so that when we have our musicals that we have in the spring that we're proud of, it's a better environment for that. Culinary arts and cosmetology are two career tech programs that are open to the public. We've actually given our seniors twenty percent discount cards. Those have been pretty popular with our seniors and senior citizens, I should say, not seniors in high school. So, we'd have a community entry there. Culinary and COS are right there. You can grab something needed, culinary, go over to COS and get your haircut. It's really the synergy that we're trying to create here. And so, that new school would actually have that very visible from the street. Right now, it's at Normandy, but in all honesty, it's kind of buried. You don't really see it from the street level. If you know it's there, that's great, but it's a little bit, a little bit clunky to get to. So, these are just some examples of what we're trying to create. These are some examples of how the interior can look better. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to you and see what your questions are. So, we'll start with questions here, and let's do this. Let's start with questions about the bond issue, and then after that, we'll take any questions, okay? But what I don't want to do is jump back and forth. So, bond issue questions first, and then we'll move into other questions that you might have about the school district in general. Yes, sir?
The first item here, voting no does not keep Parma's seniors high school open. That sounds to me like you're telling us, your boss, the Parma School District taxpayers, that what we think does not count.
Well, no, that's not actually true, but the Parma taxpayers elected a school board of five people, commonly elected. And that school board passed last year in June a resolution that said, Parma is not a part of our future. So, we are consolidating to the two. The two schools would be Valley Forge and Normandy. And yes, the truth is that even if this bond issue fails, we're still going ahead with that consolidation. It's two separate tracks. You've got new construction, which we clearly hope to build a new Parma Senior High or whatever we decide to call it, right at that same location. The other track is consolidation. And so, they both are running on the train, at the train tracks at the same time. And that was all driven by a five-year forecast. That was all driven by finances. We're trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible. So, you're correct in that we are going to go ahead with that, but the way we've had, you know, some recourse was through an elected board of education. Other questions about the bond issue or anything from Facebook? I think we said we would jump back and forth, Gary.
There does not appear to be any comments on this side.
Okay. So, let's jump into any questions about in general. Anything about the schools, anything about me, anything about curriculum instruction with Dr. Stropko here? Go ahead, sir.
When I was in school, the thing that was most prominent to me is this teacher-student relationship. They inspired me in ways I could go on for hours and talk about. It's that inspiration that causes the student to reach inside and reach for heights they never thought were possible. That is done between the student and the teacher. And the school building has nothing to do with it, unless I'm wrong.
Yeah, honestly, I think that's a matter of opinion, right? No opinion's wrong. It's just some people hold a different opinion. My opinion would be, that's very important, and environment is also important. Are they equally important? That's a good question. I'd probably say, and what you're saying, in that the relationship is more important. But I'd also say the environment's important, and I would also say try to be competitive for a community in that we want to make sure that we are giving community residents reasons to stay, reasons to invest, reasons to come to Parma. I think that's critically important. The one high school, I will tell you that the consolidation piece has all been about allowing people to do exactly what you just said. We thrive on opportunity. We want to provide opportunity for our kids. The reason we're closing buildings is the more money we spend on maintenance, the more money we spend on things like snow plowing and cutting grass and roofs, like the Normandy roof just blew off. The more money we spend on that, the less money that we can spend on things like sports and extracurriculars and career tech programs and things like student council and all these ways that do exactly what you're saying. The fewer buildings we operate, the less maintenance we have, the more we can continue to focus on exactly that piece. And that's, that's my truth. Go ahead.
This is kind of a statement and a question. So, going back to what this gentleman said, the teacher-student relationship is critical, absolutely. However, then a rumor is cited as that environment impacts your ability to learn and your ability to work. So, they've done that study offices, they've done educational facilities, they've done it in places like that. I bring that up as an example because I think part of the problem with getting this levy passed, which, or the bond issue, sorry, passed, which I'm very much in favor of, is a lack of confidence in the decision that was made to build this new facility. Some people see it as extra. Some people see it as a waste of tax credit dollars. There's been scandals within the school board and then Parma City Schools history that have harmed the confidence of citizens in their ability to make decisions. So, my question is really, there are scientific quantifiable reasons to build this building. There are, there are things that can be discussed and to prove out the reasoning. So, my question's really around, like, how do you intend to build that confidence? To, to, what kind of campaign discussion, whatever, do you want to have? What are the plans to show the citizenry that this is a decision made because we need it, not because you want Nancy School brat about? That's not how I feel. I'm just saying, like, how, what are the plans to prove that out?
Yeah, one of the, actually, on these is, one of the main bullet points right here. It was on a different... Yeah, one of the main bullet points right here. "School construction raises test scores, public school enrollment and home prices." Nielsen and Zimmerman, 2014. So, that's a piece of it. And part of us is making sure we're having that conversation with people. We use our social media to do that too. We use our mailings to do that. To answer your question honestly, it's very difficult. It's such a large population. So, it's, and in that population, everybody cares about something different. So, there are some people who thrive on what you just said, which is, what does research say? But I will tell you, there's a lot of people who are, it's about an emotional attachment to a specific school or it's about, quite frankly, for some of it, it just comes down to money. For some of it, it does come down to corruption of past years that, you know, we don't have anything to do with. But to your question, we try to be everywhere we can and have these conversations. I would open, you know, the floor to you too. I mean, we will go and have any conversation with, we'll talk to two people, we'll talk to four people. The reality is, we're about five, five weeks away, honestly. I mean, May 2nd is election day. So, wherever we can be, we want to be because I think it's critical. And again, different people thrive on different things, and we try to, try to be ready to respond to anything. Very good, very good comment, sir. I thought it was Stan Randy, but then you were telling people that it wasn't.
Randy's the first man.
Randy, all right. We reversed.
I have my email address.
All right, Randy, go ahead.
That's a cool thing to do back there. I have three questions for you.
All right, sir.
Number one, explaining the financing because it says here seventy-one million dollars is coming in, but it's not going to come in the beginning, I understand. Number one, where are the...
Can I just answer number one?
I'm sorry?
Can I just answer number one because my memory's not that good? And then I'll come back to you for two and three?
You may do that.
Okay, so he's right. So, we're part of the ELP program. ELP is called the Expedited Local Partnership Program. So, there's six hundred and eight school districts in Ohio, and they all line up for money from the state. Some of them are going to take money from the state, and some of them aren't. We're about halfway back in the pack right now. So, out of the six hundred and eight, we're right around three hundred and eleven, I think, in line. Now, that sounds really bad, but of the three hundred and ten school districts in front of us, some will never ask the state for money. Some just, they don't need your schools, or they're not going to try to pass a bond issue. So, you never really know when you're going to get to the front of the line. When we get to the front of the line, the state's going to write us a check for seventy-one point nine million dollars because they owe us that because the Parma taxpayers paid all up front to get that high school. At that point, the school board has some decisions to make. The school board can invest that in new schools, which would, you know, potentially be, you know, your middle schools and your elementary schools. They could pay it on the bond, and they could say, okay, it was a thirty-six-year bond. Let's make it a thirty-four-year bond, as an example. They could say, let's just put it into upkeep. Let's put it in, making sure that we've got, you know, money in the bank, so to speak, to keep up the new building. So, you're correct in that we won't have the money until it's our turn. And our turn could be two years from now, it could be three years from now, it could be four years from now. We don't know exactly because the state doesn't know of the school districts in front of us, who's going to say, hey, my turn, I want the money now. I would love to be able to tell you, we're going to get jumped to the front of the line because we're Parma, gosh darn it, and we're better and we're bigger, and... But that's not how the state works. They have a really funky formula that I, quite frankly, have some disdain for because for some reason, Shaker Heights, who always passes bond issues and lobbies, et cetera, is already, they're already qualifying for their thirty-seven percent. Meanwhile, we're still waiting in line. That makes absolutely no sense to me, but that's how the state works. So, that was number one.
Okay, nice. So, essentially then, the building must come first before the settlement comes down for the other project.
That's right.
Okay, second question. Where will the students from Parma go after you tear down the building?
We've actually already split them up. So, about half have gone to Valley Forge and half have gone to Normandy. And it actually, believe it or not, breaks up almost identical. There, the populations at both schools next year are going to be about fifteen hundred kids. So, it's, it might be fifteen, hundred and fifty, it might be fourteen, fifty, you know, but it's right around there. So, we've already split them up. They got letters in December saying, here's where you want it, here's where you're signed. We offered them what we call school of choice so that they could say, I don't want to go to Valley Forge, I want to go to Normandy. We switched about two hundred kids total going one way or the other. And so, now we're at about fifteen hundred each on either side of town.
Third question, and if there's any principals in you, you're not going to like this question, but you're going to close down four or five schools.
For next year?
Or whatever it's going to be. I've never heard anybody say that we're going to save money on payroll. As we talked about, eighty percent of the budget goes to payroll. So, you've got principals and assistant principals at the schools, Parma, as they're closing down. Are they going to be staying employed or will they be saying, bye-bye, tough luck, world's tough?
So, we have said it, but again, and I'm not saying we've said it enough or, you know, but we have said it, actually, the closing will save three point one million dollars. That was a minimal estimate. Now that we actually are starting to get, you know, results back of our staffing and our student enrollment projections, it's going to be more about three point three, three point four million. And that includes salaries. That includes some administrative reduction, that includes some teaching reduction. Now, part of that teaching reduction is also due to the fact that, you know, a year ago, we were ninety-three hundred students. Now, we're ninety-one hundred students. If you do the math, you know, one teacher for every twenty-five kids, you're already down eight. So, it's not really about closing schools that we got there, it's just, you know, more efficient staffing. So, yeah, it's been three point one million was the, hey, we absolutely will make that. We're a little higher than that now. We're about three point four. And the principals of Parma Senior High, I don't want to be very specific, but some of them have jobs and some of them are going to have to apply for new jobs within the district, is the obvious.
Saying for vice principals, the colleges, that all that kind of stuff?
That's correct.
So, they will apply for a guess your job, but have seniority, won't they, in that...
Administratively, it doesn't really matter.
Oh, doesn't, okay.
Seniority is not a, unless it's, and I'll be honest, again, being transparent and trying to tell you guys everything, unless it's sort of a tiebreaker. We had an elementary situation. We have eight elementary schools, we're going to six elementary schools.
How about four?
That's if we pass the second round. For next year, it'll be six. If we pass the ultimate, like, long-term, pass the second bond issue, yeah, it would be four. But that's not part of this plan. This plan for next year, we're at six. So, seniority in principals did come into play because, quite frankly, we have eight very good people. And when you have eight very good people and there's not some type of glaring weakness or strength that's going to separate the path, then seniority did have a little bit of a factor. I think we have a question from Facebook. Or did, wait, did I get all three?
Randy?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll have more.
Gary, go ahead.
We have a question of, how long is the new school projected to last?
Well, we would think at least seventy years, right? That would be the expectation. I mean, our schools have lasted seventy, eighty. Thorough Park is coming up in a hundredth anniversary, actually, in 2026. It'll be a hundred years. It'll be a hundred years, so we'd be able to confidently say seventy, and obviously, we would work to expand that. Uh, let's go, you, sir, and then we'll come back to you, just to make sure everybody gets a first chance.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, so-
I'll try to be ready for you.
Yeah, we can do it one at a time, that's fine. And I'm a proponent of one school, too. I think it opens up a lot of opportunities for the kids, educationalized. And it brings the community together, too, I think, if everybody's in one, rather than having rivalries and stuff, so. One of the things, I'm, that was a good question, that was on my list. What's the expected student-to-teacher ratio?
It's really the same, yeah, it's the same. We, we've always said consolidation has nothing to do with bigger classes. So right now, we, we, and we've just gone through staffing, and we're at a secondary level, we're at twenty-five to twenty-eight, and that's what we will work to maintain.
Okay.
It is, that's not a variable when we think about new schools.
Okay, and I've been a resident, well, I've lived here my whole life, so sixty years, and I, there's been many changes to the current schools. They add on when they need, they reconfigure. Will there be flexibility in these schools in the future to do that, build walls here and stand here?
Yeah, in fact, that's a, that's a big piece of what they're trying to build in, is flexibility. One of the fears, and you guys haven't brought this up, but it's come up before, is, you know, you're projecting three thousand students, and that's based on a lot, that's a very scientific study that gave us that three thousand student estimate. What if you go to thirty-two hundred? And so that, we've got to be flexible enough to accommodate that. Frexville, Parma Heights is going through that right now, I don't know if anyone's heard, but they, they ran into some issues there. Elementary school that they just built isn't big enough. Right now, they're using some community space to sort of stem the gap. We, we don't want to do that. Part of, and, and this is not saying we're going to get everything right, please, not that arrogant. I mean, these are big variables that people weigh, but we're learning from folks that have made some mistakes. Berea is an example. Berea has no cafeteria right now. Whoever decided in Berea that that was a good idea, I don't know. But to have no large-scale cafeteria, again, I already said, you know, we're going to have a few smaller ones, a freshman cafeteria, sophomore cafeteria, they don't even have that. They have little lounge spaces, and so, guess where the food is? All over the place. I mean, the students and even the teachers are, are, are pretty unhappy. So we're taking pretty copious notes to make sure that we don't make some of these mistakes. Keep going, keep going.
So, yeah, the last one, at least for now. So with the design of the school, and I know you're trying to recognize the history of Parma High School and all that, and that's great, but has there been thought to recognizing and honoring the Valley Forge and Normandy, to building that into the design? Because that might help you get more votes, too, because people might be thinking, well, what, what about my history? You're only, you're only preserving Parma's history and throwing everybody else away. That might help them buy in, if they know that they're not forgotten.
So, and you're, you're a hundred percent right. One of the answers to that is that, remember, right away, Normandy and Valley Forge stay, and they become your, your middle schools. And so that allows for that consolidation, because we have three middle schools right now, it goes down to two. So those buildings wouldn't be knocked down right away. Long-term, if we were able to pass a second bond issue and build new middle schools, that's where you could see some of that. What did this school look like, and what do we want to keep? But in the meantime, we also have Heritage Hallway here, and Heritage Hallway is about taking all three of those school cultures and their halls of fame, and, you know, their different memorabilia, and having, you know, access to that right here in this Heritage Hallway. So when you come in, you could, you know, hopefully start to get a picture here. You've got Heritage Hallway, you're going up to your Performing Arts Center, you've got, you know, a place to have lunch on your left, you've got a place to get your hair cut on your right, and sort of bask in, you know, Parma history, so. Good, very good points, very good points. Gary, it sounded like you had a question over there?
Yes. Will the elementary schools that are staying open be given more resources to handle the larger influx of children for next year? More staff, administrators, et cetera?
Yeah, they are, and, and so the question is really about the consolidation for next year, and that's fine, too. We've taken a lot of questions, we can kind of piggyback or go back, back and forth, I should say. The answer's yes, they will have more support. Again, class sizes, we're not, we're not saying, okay, Thorough Park, Thorough Park's getting about, actually, a hundred and fifty kids or so. So we're not saying, okay, a hundred and fifty kids, throw them into the classroom, teachers that exist. We're adding to the teaching supply, we're adding to the, to the office support. We want to make sure that, you know, again, this has never been about getting rid of, you know, teachers, or, or jacking class sizes up to thirty-two. We want to keep that elementary class size is right around twenty-five. When, when it gets over twenty-five, we start to get nervous and look at adding another section. Secondary, we're okay, twenty-five to twenty-eight. For the most part, elementary is right around that twenty-five number, and we'll stay there. Is there another one?
I'm May Valley, what are we moving on besides this one?
Depends where you live. Seven Hills also has a renewal for fire, no, for sewer. Seven Hills has a renewal for sewer. In Parma, Ward One has a council primary in the Democratic Party, so there's that, and that, that's, that's all, that's all, yeah. And then Parma Heights, we're it. There's nothing else in Parma Heights. Go ahead, Randy.
Another question. I was at my doctor's office about two weeks ago, and I was asking him, in terms of medication, where's the, see him, where it's going to be in ten years? He said it'll be over the phone, he said, you won't have to come over here. With Parma students going down from your prior projections, and more and more people doing tell us stuff, will the school really be used that much because more people will do that at home?
It's a really good question, and there's also been a recent school district in Ohio that changed to four days a week, and so they have a fifth day that's online. I could tell you, with the folks that are here right now in the room, Mr. Vaughn, myself, Dr. Schrocko, kids in school is the best thing that you can possibly have. You know, you talked before about the teacher and the student relationship. I think that's a lot harder on the computer, I think it's a lot harder, just, you know, going through an Apex program. Apex is an online platform where kids just kind of self-paste their way through the work. So this group here would certainly commit to, to really retaining that in-school piece. And I'll also give you this example. We, a couple of years ago, during COVID, we started, PBLA it was called, Parma Virtual Learning Academy. And Parma Virtual Learning Academy, we hoped, and I said it a million times, Facebook Live, all these things, it's built to last, built to last. But we're closing K to eight, well, we never had K, K for two. We're closing three to eight, grades three to eight, in PBLA, because we just don't have enough kids that are interested. So believe it or not, those kids have said, you know what, we've tried the online piece, we want to come back. And, and so we'll still have the high school piece, because there's still enough demand for that. And high school kids, obviously, can have a little bit more, you know, wherewithal to do that, but really, the, the appetite is for, for in-school learning, and my hope is that it continues. But it's a, it's a good question, it's something we've already dabbled in, so we have some experience, certainly monitor it.
Well, the school system's gone from five days to four days. Then the trend will happen down the road of the next four or five percent year. They might go to three days, or other schools might go five to four. What do we do then?
I, I, quite frankly, I'd toss your school board out and elect another one.
What?
I'd toss your school board out and elect another one, whoever you. I, I mean, I just, I think five days is important, and I think we would always fight to retain that. But again, for me to speak to a new school board that's here ten or twelve years from now, I mean, I can't do that, but I, I just think it's really important.
As a parent, that'd be a nightmare trying to work with all my kids.
Total nightmare, alright, it's a total, it's a total nightmare. And, and we lived that, right? And we lived this two years ago, and, and it's, it's okay, it served its purpose, but it's not the ideal. Another Facebook question, Gary?
Yes. Will there be solar panels installed at the buildings?
I don't know if there's solar panels, and we'll say this, and, and we can get back to whoever asked that. We do have to meet what's called LEED certification, and LEED certification is sort of a environmentally friendly certification you get, basically. Says that your school has enough, you know, green technology in it. That's actually part of an OFCC project, so we will meet that, and within that green piece, within that, that LEED certification, I'm not sure if solar panels are part of it, we can ask our architects. Yes, sir?
Just to follow up on that question. If there aren't going to be solar panels, you're wiring up a modern school. I would assume, I guess this is something we can't answer now, this is a previous answer, but I would assume you would build it so that it can be installed. Right, so you, you could have easy access and an easy way to add that function out. Also, it seems like somebody, one of the technology tracts could do, install solar panels.
Good point, too.
Good point? Yeah. Anyway, sorry, I know you can't answer-
No, that's fine.
-the architects, but I definitely think that's something that should be considered.
Yeah, sorry, I'm a little ignorant in terms of some of the nuts and bolts of the architecture, but. You want, I need to come back to you, go ahead.
Yes, it just seems to me that, I, I've seen the Parma City School marching band. Sad. And that is a reflection on school spirit. What do you plan to change that you've seen, something you haven't done yet, to inspire school spirit?
I think a big piece of that is, and, and this is going to be a little cheesy. When we did our first, we, we engaged the community in this planning process, and we said, listen, we had been two secondary campuses, and they were going to be six through twelve, and that failed twice. Failed in the fall of twenty and the spring of twenty-one. So we brought people together last year, and we said, probably don't want to run that back, right? I mean, we just lost twice. What are some other ideas? And part of what I did to try to get people thinking about this one, is I took a pizza pan, and I took a pizza dough. And the pizza dough was supposed to make a twelve-inch pizza, but the pan was for a sheet pizza. That's what we've been trying to do in our school district. We've been trying to take this little pizza dough that was really meant for a twelve-inch pizza and spread it, and spread it, and spread it. And the problem is, just like a pizza, you start to get some holes, you start to get some, 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 you know, places in the pizza that are really very thin. That's how, that's how our school's been, honestly. I mean, we have teams, and, and the band is one example, but we have teams, too, where you may play on a Friday night football, and then you're, they're begging you to play tomorrow on JV, even though you just played. Maybe you're a sophomore or junior, so age-wise, you're still eligible. But please, we don't have enough kids to dress tomorrow, can you come down and, and play with us? And we've been trying to say, we're three, we're three, we're three, when really, we should have been three for probably the last twelve or fifteen years. And when that happens, you get exactly what you're talking about. You get a lower quality of experience, because you just don't have the resources to put into that one. And so that's what we've been trying to create. Part of what you're saying is it's going to fix itself, because, you know, one band with the band kids for Normandy, Valley Forge, and Parma Senior High, well, now, if you've seen the band for Normandy, they don't have a numbers problem. And Valley Forge is somewhere in the middle there, and so now you've got two hundred and fifty kids playing in the band. You want to talk about school spirit, you've got, when you have a pep rally, you've got twenty-eight hundred kids sitting there, and two hundred fall athletes running out for introductions. You want to talk about school spirit, you want to talk about the community getting behind something, and saying, oh my gosh, we're, we're proud of this, all of a sudden, now Parma's knocking off menor. We can be that. That one school inherently creates those opportunities. Now we have strong freshman teams, because instead of having eight freshmen at Normandy and Valley Forge and Parma Senior High to play baseball, or nine, or ten, or sometimes we don't even have a freshman team, now we've got thirty. And so you've got competition, you've got a strong freshman team, it feeds into a strong JV team. Now it feeds into a strong varsity team, because you've had these experiences, and kids have had to compete against each other. And now we've got the best of the best on the varsity level, with some really good supporting teams underneath them. That's school spirit, that's community pride. But it takes that, because without that, we can't do one. We can't do one at Normandy, we can't do one at Valley Forge. Trust me, we looked at it, because after, Tiffany remembers this. After we failed that second time, and we were starting to look at different options, you know, people are saying, well, we want one. Well, if you want one, you're going to have to pay for it. I said, alright, you know what, let's put them all at Valley Forge. Valley Forge is actually our biggest, in terms of acreage, it's our biggest school. Put them all at Valley Forge, we'll put up trailers in the, no, 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 that's horrible, don't do that. Don't put kids in trailers because you want one high school. That's what we would have to do if we wanted one. Parma Senior High, people think that you could just put, you know, put your three thousand kids at Parma Senior High as it is right now. You couldn't do that without investing millions of dollars in that building. You'd have to re-convert the central office into classrooms, and even then, it would be ten through twelve. You could never, you couldn't get to a point where you're ninety through twelve at Parma Senior High. And again, that would be with a million dol, millions of dollars renovating that, that board office. So if we want one, and I think one's a great idea, but I'm only one opinion. If we want one, it's right there, and it's four mils, and it's on the ballot this May. Other questions? I feel like you teed that one up for me, thank you for that. Randy?
I would like everybody here to mark down on their calendars, every other Thursday, to go to Parma High School, hear the Parma School Board meetings, I'm sorry, board meetings.
Do, every other Thursday?
Every other Thursday. He buys a steak dinner, we all have a great time. He has a bear truck for us, so, but you ought to go there.
It's not out of public funds.
I've been going there for six months, and there's a lot of things going on. And one thing I have noticed, too, is you, you reward the elementary schools. That's pretty impressive with those kids doing those scores, really. And so people, six to eight, every other Thursday night, he has a party going on, and you can see what's going on. It's well worth your time to see what is going on with the school system.
Thank you, and, and we agree, and if you can't attend, it's on Facebook, too. We have tried to make that, especially the beginning, be sort of a showcase, so thank you for that.
It does like Facebook?
We didn't.
So it's not any-
There's Mr. Gary right there, he's on every, every other week.
It's not just Facebook. I don't belong to Facebook, but I can get onto it by just clicking the button, right?
Yeah, it's actually, it's on our, it's on YouTube, it's on our website as well, so.
It's posted on YouTube after the, on YouTube.
Say it again?
It's, it'll be posted on YouTube the next day, it's not live, I'm not sure.
Gotcha. It's alright, so. Gary's the man, this, this guy, I mean-
I have three and five-year-olds at gigs at school board meetings, something I want to do, but streaming takes a lot.
Bring him along, he'll provide the information. He's a hell of a guy, I'm helping you out there, sir.
That was very nice of you, so I'm babysitting them, providing adult beverages and steak. Don't tell my wife. Others? Gary, anything on Facebook? Okay, go ahead.
You've got a lot of schools here where the school buildings are newer than ours. Has there ever been a marked improvement in the educational level by state, by state standards?
Yeah, and again, that's part of that study that's up, that, that's on there. That, you can, you can Google that, you can find that, and I gave you the one study specifically, and I think it's Nielsen and Zimmerman, if I remember correctly.
I know Cleveland has improved.
Yeah, but actually, Cleveland has, not to where Cleveland wants to be, but Cleveland has a dramatic increase in graduation rates. Yeah, it's Nielsen and Zimmerman, two thousand and fourteen. So, yeah, you can Google that and take a look at that, that's all about new construction and the impact it has on those things. Facebook question, Gary?
Yes, we have two. The first one is, how much more do our property values go up with your schools?
So that's part of the study, too, is, is that it shows that it, it goes up. I can't quote an exact percentage of, of rise in property value. I also would say that, just being honest, I'm gonna, even when it hurts me, I'm going to say it. It's, it's a pretty volatile market right now. So in all honesty, I, I think, and from what I've read, and I'm not a real estate agent, but I think right now, we're here, and we're going to settle back down here anyway. So I, I think there is going to be some devaluation, just because of how high we got. I think you've seen, you know, the interest rate is continually rising, so I can't promise that, you know, Parma's going to then skyrocket even more than we are right now. I think we're a little bit artificially high. Gary, was there a second one?
There's actually two more from that. The other one is, can you explain the substitute levy that was discussed when you made that one?
Yeah, there, there is not a substitute levy on the May ballot. There was talk of a substitute levy on the May ballot. A substitute levy, we, we do this thing in Parma, and it's fine, and I get it, and I understand why it happened, but we pass, instead of continuing levers, we pass ten-year levers. So every ten years, we have to come back to the ballot and say, you know, ten years ago, you gave us an extra five million dollars from where we were, will you keep doing that? Renewals fare very well in Parma, I, I have to say. I mean, we've had two during my time, and we've passed without even really campaigning. So it's not a new tax, it's not a tax increase, and people tend to understand that. So the, the substitute levy that we talked about was potentially taking two of those and putting them into one, and making it potentially continuing, so that instead of having to keep coming back every ten years, it would just, you know, stay. It would not, it was not a tax increase, I promise you that, that was never the conversation. It was simply about saying, do we want to, try to make things a little simpler, so instead of, we've got one in twenty-four, then we have one in twenty-seven, then we have one in thirty-one again, so, you know, couldn't we simplify that? That, that's what that was about, but we did not go ahead with that. There is no substitute levy on the ballot in May, there's only the four-point-oh mil bond issue.
And then the last one is, will there be sustainable materials to use during building?
Yeah, I, I mean, sustainable materials in terms of, you know, what, what is available now is obviously something that we would prioritize. You know, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, anytime they're a part of these construction projects, and they're the ones who provide the seventy-one point nine million, anytime that they're a part of that, they have very specific, you know, design qualities and design specifications that you have to meet, or you'll never get that seventy-one point nine million. They're a partner in this, they, they, they want to make sure you're doing it right. So, yes, you know, there's, there's some faith in who's doing it locally, and certainly, we would work with a reputable architect. To this point, it's been GPD, they've been excellent. They've been excellent. GPD, if you look them up, literally just the letters, GPD. Very reputable, very extensive portfolio of experiences.
They're a national company, too.
Absolutely. Yeah, so wide range as well. I'm glad. It, it helps me if you're saying the same thing. Because sometimes.
I was surprised. Never heard of it before, but they were a national.
Yeah, yeah, very successful company. So it's not only that, but it's also the OFCC. It's also the state saying, we're building these schools all over Ohio. Let's make sure we do it right. Go ahead.
There's been a lot of talk about, like, safety in regards to the school shootings. It's just a tragedy, a sad beginning. But what other safety things are, I mean, they're in real old buildings right now. So like, what other safety things improvements will go towards the school? Are there?
That are happening right now in our schools?
No, they're going. You know, in the new school.
Since in the new schools?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What, what safety improvements for the students and teachers will be there for the, in the new school, for some of you?
So you've got, you've got shatterproof for your class. You have lockdown, you know, wings.
I mean, aside from the school shooting type things. So like, for example, asbestos is probably in these buildings at one point in the old buildings. Like, is there safe, safety measures being taken? Is there clear air?
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, that's actually a big piece of it, too. The HVAC systems that we have, they, they meet specifications, but I don't know if you remember, when they came out with COVID, in COVID, and they gave us this, this money from the federal government, one of the things they said is you can upgrade your, your, you know, ventilation systems and so you're moving air better. Ours meets specifications, so we never did, but we certainly aren't doing what you just said, which is a much higher level of air movement through buildings to keep that, you know, the germs move in quickly and all of, you know, the stuff that gets into the air, get it out of here. So that, that's one, for sure. I also think just traffic flow. I mean, I think, you know, in terms of what schools were built, you know, these really long, single-barrel hallways, double-barrel hallways is what becomes. You've got classroom doors on either side coming into each other as you come out. That's, that's really a bygone era. I mean, you really try to have better traffic flows, much more strategic to that point as well. Traffic is another one. Because I will say that all of you probably experienced this at some point in terms of sitting in traffic and waiting to drop your student off or pick them up. We have already worked with the architects to certainly look at that, but also the city. And we've had, Mayor, I'll take.
You go ahead.
We've, we've had a conversation about opening up a pathway from State Road Park so that we would actually have access to the campus from three different directions. You'd have it off of Longwood. You would have it off of 54th and you'd have it through State Road Park. And that's actually hugely advantage or advantageous. What I should say, too, in terms of 54th, we've talked about a right-hand turn only. So, you know, you get people who are coming to drop their kids off, get them right off of 54th there. You got other people coming through the park. And so those are, those are advantages to what we'd be able to do with this campus. Facebook?
With interest rates hikes, you're talking more than $11.67 per month. I don't have that right, sir. With interest rate hikes, are you talking more than $11.67 monthly for 100,000 kids?
Thankfully, we are not. We have a count, we have worked with a municipal advisor. He recommended the interest rate. We went to him, you know, before we had to lock in the bond issue and we had, and we said, hey, how are we looking? Do we need to lock in a higher rate? And obviously that would, you know, trip up that, that 4.0-mill and that $11.67 level. And he said, no, you're fine. So I think we're at 5.5 locked in, which is, you know, actually pretty conservative. So we have taken into account and know, we, once we pass this, this is it.